Here.
Alvin Nolte?
Here.
Alderman Pashlag?
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. United States of America.
And to the republic.
Republic.
Which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Under God. End of the. End of the. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need to make an official statement. In accordance with state statute, I have made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this February 16th, 2021 city council meeting is being held remotely. The first item on the agenda is reports of city officers, comments by the mayor. I have two comments. First, Frank Waldeck passed away last week at the age of 98. Frank was a wonderful gentleman whose shoes I am proud to fill. Frank served as mayor of Lake Forest from 1978 to 1981, and left a large family legacy of service to Lake Forest, which is carried on today by Joe and Kathy Waldeck, who have both made innumerable contributions to the betterment of this wonderful city. I will miss seeing him at our annual mayor's dinner and in the front pew every Sunday at the Church of St. Mary. Our prayers go out to Frank's family, and I should note that a proper resolution will be heard at the next city council meeting. God bless you, Frank. Second item is an update on the Larry Temple Public Service Award. The committee has had the opportunity to meet and has made some adjustments to the nominating period along with the award presentation. Temple Public Service Award Committee is now accepting nominations through August 1st with a tentative award planned for a city council presentation in late September or early October. Nomination forms are available on the City of Lake Forest website and at the front counter at City Hall. So please, if you know a worthy candidate, feel free to pick up a form or download one and put in your nomination. Now I'm going to introduce Elizabeth Hollab, Finance Director, with a COVID-19 financial impact update.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am going to share my screen. Hopefully you can see the slides and me. We are here this evening to just provide the normal monthly update. I would note generally the trends that we have seen and reported to you the last few months continue, which means good news in that the city is continuing to outperform the conservative budget projections included in the fiscal year 21 budget. As we turn our attention next month to the fiscal year 22 budget preparation with your budget workshop on March 8th, I think staff anticipate this will probably be your last monthly update, but we would certainly notify you if anything changed in regards to any of these trends. Just highlighting a few of the primary items we've looked at each month. Municipal sales tax continues to outperform the budget projections and doing reasonably well when looking at the fiscal year 20 actual results. So February receipts relate to November sales. So we've seen seven months of fiscal year 21 activity and can demonstrate, you know, the performance year-to-date of just a little over $1 million compares favorably to the budget-to-date of $733,000, and then the two previous columns to show fiscal year 20 actual at this point in time last year and the original budget projection for the first seven months of fiscal year 21. So continuing to do well in that area. Next is income tax revenue. Timing is a little different on this. So February receipts relate to January income tax. So we have now nine months of the 12 months of fiscal year 21 revenue for income tax distributed to us through the local government distributed fund. You can see the year-to-date number there in yellow of 1.6 million, significantly outpacing the budget of 674,000 to date, well over the original budget estimate for fiscal year 21 and actually significantly over both fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 actuals at this point. Again, as we've noted in previous presentations, this is a trend that we're seeing across the state largely due to the unemployment benefits for COVID-19 that are taxable in Illinois and therefore pass through to us through the local government distributed fund. Parks and Recreation Fund. This activity is through the end of January. We show this split apart between Parks and Forestry and Recreation Programs in the chart and the grid at the bottom. You can see prior year, year-to-date actual for each of the two sub-funds and then the total fund aggregated year-to-date last year. The budget number that you see there is for the full fiscal year. So what we forecasted in the two sub-funds and as a fund in total, and then the year-to-date actual showing the revenues and expenses as of January 31st, again, split apart as well as on a fund total basis. So you can see Parks and Forestry really operating year-to-date very similar to last year. That's to be expected. It's primarily property tax-supported and has not been impacted to the extent the recreation programs have been by COVID-19. You can see the prior year, year-to-date actual had run year-to-date a negative of 1.6 million. So the positive news is that year-to-date this year, while you see both decreases in revenue and expenses, on a net basis, it is year-to-date only running about $300,000 worse than what we would anticipate in a typical year. And then you can see the fund total and how that compares both to the budget and the prior year year-to-date. The next fund to highlight is the Golf Course Fund. Of course, we thought that it was going to be impacted especially in May, June of last year, but the course was able to reopen with restrictions on May 1, and so we are not seeing the results that we had forecasted in the budget, which is very positive news. And you can see even on a year-to-date basis, they are running ahead and outperforming at the same point in time last year. Real estate market, as we would expect to see during the winter, we've seen the residential transfers drop off a bit in the last two two months. You can see the December and January numbers there. Again, the chart we've been looking at. Every month is just quite astounding when you look at the green bar, which is our residential transfers year-to-date compared to the last four fiscal years. And again, we've already outperformed in the number of transfers for the fiscal year, any year since the real estate transfer tax was implemented in 2006. So just a remarkable year from a real estate transfer tax standpoint. You can see as of January 31, we're running about 1.5 million ahead of budget projections year-to-date. Citywide summary. This just has a lot of numbers. All you really need to focus on is the last column, which just gives you the variance to budget. So generally, positive news, running better than budget projections in fiscal year 21. Would note Recreation Program fees are running still at a deficit even compared to the modified budget. And we've talked about motor fuel tax the past couple of months, running pretty even remarkably. We did not adjust this revenue estimate because we certainly didn't anticipate COVID-19 having the dramatic effect it would have on commuting employees and for it being sustained as long as it has. But we are very, very close to budget on motor fuel tax receipts, which is good news as well. And then finally, just a recap. The Local Business Grant Program continues to operate, a portion of that being administered in finance and a portion in community development. As of today's date, we've awarded some form of local business stimulus to 59 businesses in the city. Just a little over $101,000 has been awarded. Some of that has not been paid out yet, but there are grant, the grantees are eligible for a total of 101,000, and we have three additional applications pending and being processed this week. That is the recap, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Elizabeth? All good news.
Very good news.
Okay, well, next item on the agenda then is comments by the city manager. Jason?
Great, thank you very much. And as Elizabeth noted, I would just emphasize again that I anticipate this will have been the last COVID financial update until or unless circumstances warrant further discussion because beginning in early March with our budget workshop, we'll now be pivoting to FY '22. So hard to believe it's that time of year again, but before you know it, we will be neck-deep in budget planning and preparation for the upcoming fiscal year. Just two quick announcements. I have one, a public service announcement for any residents who are watching. Anyone who's looked out their window is well aware of the incredible volume of snow that we've received over the last couple of weeks. And so while our crews are out specifically, in addition to, you know, plowing streets and doing sidewalks, clearing parking lots, they are also trying to dig out all of our fire hydrants. But I guess we're seeking the public's assistance. If you happen to have a fire hydrant in the parkway in front of your house, if you would be willing to assist us in the short term here, if we haven't gotten to it yet and dig that out for us, it would be of enormous help. Heaven forbid if we do have a structure fire in the community. Every second matters, and so having clean and easy access to the fire hydrant is critical. So thank you in advance to anyone watching tonight who may be able to provide some short-term assistance. And then next, just a reminder to the council and to the public that we have a special workshop scheduled for next week, a week from today at 6:00 PM. More information will be sent out to the council tomorrow as we finalize some logistics with an agenda posted within the next day or two as well, but just wanted to make sure that is on everyone's calendar. And otherwise, that was all I had for tonight, Mayor.
Can I make one quick comment for the shoveling out of the fire hydrants? That might be a great opportunity for some service hours for either, like National Honor Society high schoolers or even junior high or even some Boy Scout, Cub Scout troops. So I'm not sure if we have connection to that or if they're watching, but I think that would be a great idea to have them assist us.
That's a great suggestion. So I will I will inquire as to whether we have those connections. Maybe we could push something out on social media as well. So appreciate the suggestion.
Any other questions or comments for Jason? Okay. Next on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Members of the public can provide public comment by calling into the following number, 847-810-3643, or by choosing the raise hand option on Zoom. And we'll wait a minute here to let anybody from the public that would like to speak be rep.
Mayor, we have no calls at this time.
Okay, thank you. And I should point out the call-in number was shared when the agenda was published and it's posted at City of All.
Mr. Mayor, we have no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda then is committee reports. The first is, or the first and I believe only, is a continuation of the public hearing on the request to conduct or the request to consider amendments to the City of Lake Forest Plan of Operation and Governance for its electricity aggregation program. This is, as I mentioned, the second of two readings. This will be presented by Environmental Sustainability Chair Melanie Rumel and Mike Strong, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was presented during our last meeting, Illinois law allows a municipality to engage in power supply contracts on behalf of its residents and small commercial customers through a process that's known as municipal aggregation. This is done in hopes of securing electricity rates that are lower than the standard rates offered by COMED. The city had some success with this program in the fiscal years 2012 through about 2015. In fact, we achieved over $4 million in savings in those years. However, since 2017, COMED's electricity rates for supply became more competitive within the market, and as a result, direct savings through the traditional aggregation program were no longer available. However, a new municipal aggregation program is being used by a number of municipalities to secure savings by moving some residents, but not all, to an alternate energy supplier. These savings now would be estimated at approximately $50,000 a year. That's five zero not one five. And these savings can be used by the city to purchase either renewable energy certificates to offset the community's energy usage with clean energy, or we can use it for other sustainability initiatives. However, before the city can participate in this type of arrangement, we need to amend our aggregation program's rules of operation and governance. This process, as you know, we were in the second half of it now, the second of two public hearings. We held the first on February 15th, and I ask that we now open the second and final public hearing on this matter. Everything was properly noticed on both January 14th and January 21st. So I think the next step, Mr. Mayor, is for you to open the second public hearing on this matter.
Can't hear you.
I would request a motion to conduct a public hearing to consider amendments to the City of Lake Forest Plan of Operation and Governance for its electricity aggregation program and open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, and then I need a roll call vote, Biddy.
Alvin Morris?
Hi.
Alvin Harris?
Hi.
Alvin Rumel?
Hi.
Alvin Nolte?
Hi.
Alderman Pashlag?
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Hi.
Alderman Bushman?
Hi.
Alderman Weber?
Hi.
A E A zero N A, motion carries to open a public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is open. I believe Mike Strong may have some slides.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I have just a few quick slides to share to kind of go over, and then I'll be happy to take any questions we have or if there are any questions from the public on this matter. I thought we could first start with just a quick review based on feedback that we heard during the first hearing. I thought it was important to just write some quick background on the consortium and to talk a little bit about some of the initiatives that the consortium has been exploring and working on since it was founded back in 2011. Tonight, we're talking about municipal aggregation, and as Chairman Buffalo stated, we had some success in a traditional aggregation program several years ago, seeing savings of about $4 million in Lake Forest and over $36 million across the rest of the consortium communities. It was a very successful program, and that aggregation model, which allowed us to secure a supply rate on behalf of residents that was lower than COMED, is what resulted in those savings. That model is being evolved into a new model, which we'll talk a little bit further, but a program that the consortium was really established behind was establishing aggregation programs in the various communities that make up the consortium. Another program, you may recall, back in 2019, was a pilot community solar program whereby the city was able to subscribe various municipal accounts to community solar farms in the COMED territory. At that time, this was brand new. We were really the first consortium community to be a part of a community solar facility in Elgin, Illinois, you may recall. And we, along with a few other North Shore communities, subscribe accounts to date over the past 12 months. While the savings have been nominal, I think it's been a great exercise and opportunity to support solar development in the COMED territory and allow us to understand a little bit more about how we can support community solar. And being a part of that first program, we've certainly learned a lot, and we hope down the road, we'll be able to secure more accounts and subscriptions for our municipal facilities like lift stations, streetlights, those types of accounts that power our community. And then most recently, the community solar program, we expanded to offer this opportunity from not just municipal clients but to our residents. And so the solar program, the community solar program, offers direct savings opportunities for our residents who are not otherwise engaged in a third-party supply contract. So I'm sure, like you, many of us are receiving, you know, direct mail campaigns from energy companies asking for our business. You know, so those are types of opportunities that exist in the private market. This community solar opportunity is just another way to promote renewable energy, to allow residents to engage in supply contracts on their own. And so just a quick review of some of those programs that the consortium has been working on and supporting, and the city as a founding member, that consortium has certainly endorsed and participated in these three. And tonight, as we explore municipal aggregation, renewing that program, I think it's just important to kind of step back and say, and see some of the other opportunities that we've been able to grow as a consortium of communities. So a couple of questions came up at the last hearing about, you know, the relationship of community solar and this municipal aggregation program. And I thought it was important to remind residents and those that may be watching that there are a lot of options that residents have when they are looking at their energy supply. We know that there's really two options. You can either stay with COMED or allow the utility, the local utility, to choose your supplier, or you can go to the market. You can engage in various retailer, retail supply companies that you can pay either a fixed rate to, you know, to provide you with clean energy, green energy, or the standard mix of energy. So those are really the two options you have when you're looking at your energy supply. And the price setter of those options really depends on which category you fall into. If you're on the default supply rate, meaning you haven't engaged in a contract, COMED really sets that rate through the Illinois Power Agency. That's a state-regulated tariff and rate. On the retail side, you can negotiate, or you may receive or be able to negotiate rates with a retail supplier. This is where municipal aggregation comes in. We can, as a community, aggregate the supply for our residents and go to the market to see what kind of rates we can get to provide our residents. And so municipal aggregation is a way to use the retail market to potentially find opportunities and value that may not be available through a default rate with COMED. And of course, among these options, there are fixed rates or variable rates depending. COMED offers hourly rates. They also offer a fixed-rate program. Retail supply rates are typically fixed, so you pay X dollar per kilowatt hour for every kilowatt hour per month. That's fixed over the course of 12 or 24 months. With municipal aggregation, we used to look at that. We used to look at a fixed-rate option, but now we're seeing variable rates. Municipal aggregation programs where we can go out and collect supply, we're seeing some communities be able to negotiate with suppliers to maintain those rates with COMED's rates. So meaning they fluctuate month-to-month depending upon the cost of electricity. So we're seeing municipal aggregation programs really, really adapt. And this is where the value can come in for the city. With the default COMED rate, you know, those residents that are on the standard rate, they could qualify. If they want direct savings, they can sign up for our community solar program. And that guarantees them a direct savings of 20% on their supply rate. For those residents that may not be interested in community solar, this is where the aggregation program could provide some value to the community. Where municipal aggregation formerly was the same rate for everyone, at one fixed rate, rather, municipal aggregation now is evolving to allow cities to guarantee that residents within the program would pay no more than the COMED default rate. And so by doing so, there is savings potential that we would be able to access, as Chairman Rumel stated, which is estimated right now of about $50,000, to where the community could receive that benefit to either purchase renewable energy certificates or to put towards sustainability programs. So I think it was important to kind of look at some of these options that exist. And while tonight, we're not necessarily asking for the council to engage in a contract, we are asking for us to look at the rules, look at our rules of municipal aggregation to allow us to seek out pricing that may not beat COMED's rate, but then they provide other benefits like renewable energy credits, variable rates, and so forth. Our current plan of operation and governance that that runs our program doesn't allow us to ask those questions. And so by moving forward with an amended plan of operation for our municipal aggregation program, we'll be able to sit at the table and see what exists in the market to come back to and to present to council down the road if that makes sense. So additional benefits with renewing or exploring a new aggregation program. As was stated, we've talked a lot about renewable energy. That's obviously a very positive draw and benefit to be able to offset energy usage in our community with renewable energy. That's a goal, not just of our sustainability plan, but also of the Greenest Regions Compact that we have endorsed and are a part of. There's no rate risk for residents. They would be paying the same rate they would be if we were to remain with COMED through this program. We also would receive a designation from the EPA as a green power community, which is a nice recognition piece, but EPA also provides us materials and information to help educate residents on this type of program. In addition to the contribution, we'd offer favorable terms, meaning residents would be able to opt out of this arrangement at any time without any penalty. And so not to mention the last benefit, which wasn't on the screen. Municipalities that engage in aggregation programs also see solicitation activity drop once communities engage in a contract with a third-party supplier. We're not seeing the amount of solicitation that we're seeing when existing programs, when there aren't existing programs, because of course, those companies are looking for business. So it's another sort of added value out of having an aggregation in place while also giving peace of mind to residents that we've gone through this process to secure a contract with a company that's viable and credible. So our next steps, as stated, you know, really, tonight's public hearing authorizes the city council to consider amendments to the plan. Included in your omnibus agenda this evening is an ordinance that would authorize those amendments to be approved. And if we were to approve those amendments this evening, our next step would be to sit down with the consortium as a partner to solicit proposals from potential vendors for fixed-price rates, for variable rates price, for potential civic contributions, all of those types of opportunities we would be able to sit down and participate in. We would then bring back through the Environmental Sustainability Committee a recommendation if there was a favorable proposal. And then at that point, we could discuss engaging in a contract, much like we did with the original aggregation program, a power supply agreement with the retail supplier, and then start looking at communication and marketing, working with the consortium and those partners to establish the program and get it running. But down the road, certainly some next steps that we're thinking about already, should the council be supportive of this type of endeavor? And then the last piece, that last point, EPA as a green power community would allow us and be able to track the renewable energy usage within our community, which is a very nice metric and something that I know the Environmental Sustainability Committee has been interested in exploring as well. So some additional benefits there that we'd be able to prepare for. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that the council may have at this time. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that the council may have at this time.
I have one question, Mike. It's Jennifer. Who talks about evaluating proposals and pricing? What what I mean, would we use the expertise on our council, or would we bring in, contract someone to guide us through evaluating those proposals?
Yeah, typically, in the past, the consortium members, along with we with a general counsel and with an energy consultant, has done the preliminary review of those proposals to ensure they're responsive, to ensure that they've presented or meet the requirements of of those proposal packages. But that's primarily staff-led, and then we'll bring back options and recommendations either to a committee or the council. So that's been our practice in the past.
Okay. And they talked about the green power community. Is that a designation that is provided just for offering a program to have by having a program in place? Or do you have to have a percentage of, you know, an adoption rate percentage?
Correct. Yeah, it they're they're offering the recognition through any 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 community that establishes a community choice aggregation program, which is what's sort of being proposed. There is no requirement for minimum percentage, although if you go to their website, they will show you the the top 10 communities. And I think there are maybe five or six Illinois communities that are, I think, are pretty high up there in terms of their of their percentage of renewables being used. But certainly, there's no minimum requirement. The only requirement of that program is that we report annually what the percentage of renewable energy is, which is something that we have, we would be asking the supplier to provide if we get to that, if we get to that.
It's an engagement commitment, really. Okay, thank you.
Mike, if if I'm a resident and want to proceed through the path that you charted, is there is there a way to get in touch with somebody to say, I'm sure they're going to say, where do I go? I mean, how do I start the process? Who do I call? How do I get this going?
Yeah, well, and and right now, since we don't have an aggregation program, the only program we have active is the community solar program. And so we've we've established a website where residents can go, as well as an email and a phone call center. And so that would be where we would direct residents to learn more about community solar and and those benefits. With aggregation, we know, just in talking to some colleagues and to some some other partner communities that have engaged in these, you know, there will be some education that that we will have to and communication that we'll have to get ahead of to establish. But we we're asking the supplier to provide the same level of customer service as we are with the community solar, meaning a dedicated website, a call center, email, having some customer service at our disposal to use, but still very much being in in control of that of the messaging behind it. So I think, you know, if there's a question on community solar, we've information on our website currently, but I'm happy to, you know, share that link out as well if you have residents that are interested in it. But for aggregation, as we look down the road, I think a lot of of the customer service will fall, or we've asked the the supplier at least to provide us some supplemental support on that based on the experience and based on what what we've seen in other communities.
Just to emphasize what what Mike was saying, both of these programs are opt-in programs. So it takes initiative of our residents to opt into these. The only program that's up and running right now is community solar, which is the program where the consumer reaps the economic benefit from it. With this municipal aggregation, the municipality reaps the economic benefit. So that's the difference between the two. But right now, only community solar is available. This is a preliminary step toward making municipal aggregation available to our residents. And Mike and I spoke earlier today, I think our real challenge is to get more subscriptions to either one of these programs, which is going to take a although we did get support from community solar and everyone got a postcard, and we they do have the website that you can link into, which is very helpful. I think as a community, we need to increase our outreach to residents to let them know that this is available. I don't know how we do that further. Maybe that's a challenge for our communications department to get the word out more to residents, because either of these programs are fabulous. And by signing up with either of them, you are supporting green energy alternatives, which is certainly important for all of us to be supporting. So I encourage residents to go to our website, sign up now for community solar. If you don't think that's a program you want, wait a while, and we will have information on this community aggregation available as well. But the more subscribers, the better. So if we can increase our communications with regard to this, I think it would be fabulous. So thanks.
Now, just after that comment, we've started primarily internally to to think about how we can not only bolster our our cities' channels of communication, but how we may also help with our partner agencies or, you know, local advocacy groups to help amplify, you know, some of some of that information. So we're working on that. More to come. But I certainly think, as as Alderman Rommel pointed, that outreach is is really critical across the consortium as well. Other communities are struggling with the messaging, but we want to be consistent and and accurate in what's what the message and the delivery is. So we're certainly working on that, and please look forward to more outreach on it.
You know, just as an aside, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but I've been, and maybe some of you have too, the some of the other groups I belong to, when I'm on a Zoom meeting with them, I take an opportunity often to promote this. And I think, you know, a cross-section of of all of the council members, we belong to a number of other organizations. And I think that's a great way to get the word out. It's it's a win-win. There's no downside to it. You can opt out of these contracts whenever you want to. You're not putting solar panels on your roof. It's just makes a lot of sense. So I think I'd put that request out that, you know, if you're comfortable raising this with some of the other organizations when you're at their meetings as well.
Melanie, I was just going to say, just maybe we can talk about doing, putting together a communications plan around Earth Day, too, so that, you know, we distribute or disseminate some of these messages, you know, and coincide with Earth Day, Earth Day effort.
Any other questions? At this point, I would ask for comments from the public. It's the same call-in number that we used before, 847-810-3643, and also the raise hand option.
Have no calls.
Mr. Mayor, there are no raised hands.
In that case, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Hi.
Alderman Kears.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel?
Hi.
Alvin Notes?
Hi.
Alderman Freshlight?
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Hi.
Alderman Bushman?
Hi.
Alderman Weber?
Hi.
EPA, 0 May, motion carries to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And then, as Mike mentioned, in our omnibus, which is the next thing on the agenda, there will be an actual item there that we will approve to approve these changes to the plan of operation and governance. So the next thing on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. We have 10 items tonight, so I will now read them off. First is approval of the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next city council meeting. Second is approval of the February 1, 2021, city council meeting minutes. Third is approval of a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Landscape Concepts Management for citywide grounds maintenance services for an amount not to exceed $174,359. Fourth is approval of a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Mariani Landscape for grounds maintenance services at Forest Park in the Parks Fiscal Year 2022 budget for an amount not to exceed Fifth is approval of a park and recreation board recommendation for annual tree purchasing in the forestry department budget for fiscal year 2022. Sixth is approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to approve the Deer Path Water Main Replacement Design Services for a replacement water main from Awani Lane to Golf Lane, being awarded to Baxter and Woodman Consulting Engineers in the not-to-exceed amount of $39,000. Seventh is approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to approve design services for the replacement of both the Illinois and woodland pedestrian bridges to Wiss, Janney, Elsner, and Associates in the not-to-exceed amount of $46,570. Eighth is approval to renew the Intergovernmental Program Agreement between the City of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff Park District. Ninth is approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 97 of the Lake Forest City Code to add provisions regarding commercial activities at city parks and recreational properties and facilities. And 10th is waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance adopting an amended plan of operation and governance for the city's municipal aggregation program. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to see removed or taken separately, or any comments or observations? Alderman Rommel?
Mr. Mayor, we spoke about this via email earlier. When I saw these contracts for landscaping come across in the omnibus agenda, it I reflected back on our sustainability plan and certainly some of the items that we've been talking about in the Environmental Sustainability Committee. And so I reached out to Superintendent Myers to ask him whether there are elements in these contracts and whether we've spoken to the purveyors of these services about complying with some environmentally sustainable practices. And to my delight, Superintendent Myers was able to state that he had had that discussion with Landscaped Contract Concepts Management. And in fact, there are some sustainable measures which they will try and incorporate into their maintenance of our city parcels. And so if you wouldn't mind Superintendent Myers just outlining some of those for the council and and the public, I thought we all might be interested in some of those measures, if that's okay.
Sure.
Good evening. Yeah, and as Alderman Rommel mentioned, we did start doing this a couple years ago with Forest Park. That's one of the contracts there. And back then, we decided that, as you all know, it's a pretty high-maintenance park, pretty special in the community. So we decided it would be a great place to start with some of these initiatives. So at that time, Mariani started using all-electric blowers, mowers, and string trimmers. And then last year, they introduced the idea of the auto mowers, or the little remote control, or not remote control, the robot mowers, as some people call them. There's five of those out there, and they worked really nice last year. So we're pretty excited about that. We're going to continue doing that at Forest Park. So the other contract is the citywide mower contract in landscaping, much bigger type of a contract. It's in air. Some of the areas are cul-de-sacs, some of it's right-ofways. So it it's not practical, obviously, to have an auto mower in a number of those areas. But as we reached out to Landscape Concepts to see what they could offer, they were happy to offer the idea of the electric leaf blowers and the electric string trimmers to start out. So they're going to be doing that in a number of those locations. And in the future, we can talk to them about electric mowers. But there are some challenges with that in those type of settings. So it continues, we continue to do more and more. We've taken the route of trying it in a couple of select places, and it it has been working out well. As a side note, we're also looking at a auto mower in a section of the cemetery this year, which could be a a great thing, not only for being environmentally sensitive, but it's also a labor cutting device. So we're pretty excited about trying some of these things.
Did we lose Chuck?
Nope.
Oh, we're done.
No, if there's anything else, I can certainly answer. I'd be happy to.
Well, the other thing that that came up in our discussions was the use of pesticides and organic fertilizers. And Superintendent Myers and I had that discussion as well. And maybe Chuck, you'd update us a little bit on on your response in that regard.
Sure. With both of those items, most of that we try to keep in-house. So our our city staff in the park section, they also do a lot of landscape maintenance. So obviously, they do mowing and they do a lot of the bed maintenance. So as far as pesticide reductions, we focused mainly on the responsible use of pesticides over the last few years. So we we haven't eliminated them by any means. And as technology is getting better, we're exploring some of these newer products out there. And as a matter of fact, we're doing some training in a couple of weeks to get some information on how we can better maintain some of our ball fields or athletic fields. So with that, we're going to to do a pilot program at one of our parks. We haven't selected which one yet. But what we'll do is we'll apply some of these more organic-type products, including fertilizers, and reduce pesticides, or potentially someday be able to eliminate them. We'd all like to do that. We just, with the demands on athletic fields, at this point, we feel it necessary to still use some pesticides. But hopefully someday that that will be eliminated. But we're we're going to do a pilot project this year. Again, before we commit to all of our athletic fields, we want to try a field and see how things go. So we'll continue to do that kind of thing. We we would love to reduce or eliminate. So anything else?
No, all movement in the right direction. And thank you for giving us that update. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving us that time.
Thank you. Alderman Bushman?
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask our superintendent of Parks and Forestry an additional question. Superintendent Myers, on item five, we're asked to approve funding for the tree replacement program. And you mentioned that you're anticipating planting some 300 trees this year, and noting that trees in our community are such importance to our beauty and ambiance, you know, it's obviously a very important funding. And I'm wondering, recognizing threats that we've seen in the past and continuing, whether it's Emerald Ashmore, or I think it's the Borough Blight, and also Mother Nature and the climate changes we continually need to face. Do you foresee near term any significant threat to our trees?
Yeah, I can address that. I guess before I do that, I do want to put in a plug to our outstanding forestry staff. I know many of you have worked with them, led by Corey Weirma, the city forester. He's got five guys that work for him. A number of them are certified arborists. They're just a fantastic staff to have. I can't say enough about them. So your forest is in great hands. I can attest to that. So with that, they keep me well advised about the things that are going on out there with our trees. And there's always things going on with the trees. There's always insects and disease that impact our forest canopy. So as you mentioned, Emerald Ashmore was probably the biggest one in recent years. We are seeing the other side of that. It's still out there, but it's it's kind of run its course. And some of the other ones that have come and gone, they're still out there. You just don't hear as much about it from me. Borough Blight is something that is newer that most people haven't heard about. We are finding it throughout the city. It's 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 still It's still relatively harder to find, I guess you'd say. It's not, it's not threatening the, all the oaks or anything. We're seeing it here and there. But I guess the one thing I would probably mention, and you alluded to this, is that one of our bigger concerns is the different environmental factors that we deal with. So over the last couple of years, we've had really wet springs. And whenever you have wet springs, that makes our trees more susceptible to issues. So these diseases and insects are always out there. But when the trees are stressed by these environmental factors, and whether it's from just climate change or just the seasonal differences, it does have a big impact on trees. So yeah, it is very much a challenge to keep ahead of this stuff. And every year, we do seem to have influxes in the number of cases of things, even like Diplodia tip blight. You've seen that in the Austrian pines, things like that. It does kind of ebb and flow. But right now, I guess we're keeping an eye on those environmental factors that tend to exacerbate the issues with plant disease. So I hope that answered your question.
And hopefully, it also says you're comfortable with the funding level you're asking for approval tonight.
Yes. We were asking for more a few years back due to the replanting from Emerald Ash Bore, but we have somewhat caught up on that. We've replaced the trees that we thought needed to be replaced. So now we're back into our regular replacements, and it's from disease or other things that have killed the trees. So the funding is definitely adequate this year. So we should be able to plant about 300 replacement trees in this, in this year.
Thank you, Chuck, and compliments to your forestry department.
Thank you.
Heck, I have a question while we're on the subject of trees. Given the upcoming cicada season, is there, you know, any sort of plan that the city thinks about? I don't know, you know, if they wreak havoc on any, on anything, you know, that we have. But I mean, because it's such an unusual occurrence, every 17 years, there's supposed to be a bad one this time. What, have you guys been thinking or talking about that, and do we do anything?
Well, actually, cicada kind of fall into the category of, of things that we keep an eye on. The only, and again, related to the environmental conditions. Typically, trees are going to be fine with the cicadas. It's a natural occurrence, and there'll be, you know, some damage. But again, if you couple that with environmental stressors, it could have a bigger impact. But at this time, no, we don't plan on doing anything in particular for that. It's, you know, it's something that is always out there. It's not a huge impact on trees overall.
A huge impact on humans, I guess.
Yes, the noise in particular.
I'm dating myself. I just realized. This will be my third cicada bloom since I moved to Lake Forest. So it's starting to be a long time. I can mark it in 17-year increments.
Yeah, and in the, in the deep snow and the cold that we're experiencing right now, it's kind of nice to think about the sounds of cicadas and all that.
I wouldn't go that far.
Other, other questions or observations before we bring these matters to a vote? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the 10 omnibus items as presented.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karras.
Hi.
Alderman Rummel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Freshlight.
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
And Alderman Weber.
Hi.
8 yay, 0 nay, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. The next items on the agenda are old business, new business. And there are none of those items. So the second to last thing before adjournment is additional items for discussion or comments by council members. Is there anything that any member of the council would like to speak about?
Mayor, I would just like to say to the Public Works Department and Mike Thomas, what a superb job they've done. I mentioned earlier, when we were getting ready to start on Route 60 and Waukegan Road, it's been amazing the difference on our roads versus the surrounding roads that aren't taken care of by the Public Works Department. So, well done.
Yeah, I would second that. This has been, obviously, a very challenging few weeks. And I've had a lot of compliments from pretty much everybody I see about the condition of the roads. Even, even this morning was, you know, probably a little tougher, but definitely got cleaned up quickly. So kudos to, to all the, all those people that were working, I think, a 14-hour shift last night to make sure that we could all get where we were going this morning. Anything else? All right, well, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. We'll see you in a week at the work.
See you next week.